Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is a nice full house we have. Well, this is as full as it gets for us. We do have some special recognitions this evening. Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, it is my pleasure, as we know, we always love recognizing students and when they do good things or simply excel in their studies. So, I want to introduce you to Dana Tang. She is here with her mom, Anita Tang, because Dana is the recipient of the Auburn Class of 2018 Mass Association of School Superintendents Certificate of Academic Excellence. So, the MAS sets forth criteria and guided by that, I want to share with you some of the reasons that Dana rose to the top. So, her grade point average is currently 4.586. She is looking forward to go to college and majoring in mathematics or engineering. She is president of the Auburn High National Honor Society, is a member of the following clubs: math team, Rockets to Rockets, and the Literature Club. She has taken several AP classes, including World History, Statistics, Chemistry, Calculus B.C., Physics, and Spanish. So, congratulations to Dana and to her mom, who has earned this special recognition. So, I don't know if you want to have her come up and we can present her with this.
Yeah, that would be great. Would you like to come up here and receive the certificate? And let us congratulate you.
Well deserved.
Congratulations. Very well done.
Congratulations. I hope you get a full scholarship to wherever you want to go. We'll be lucky to get you.
Would you like to say a few words? You could go up to the podium and at least maybe field a few questions. You sure?
Right behind the podium there with the microphone. They're just going to ask you a couple of questions.
If there's anything that you want to share, we'll let you start off. If not, we can just, you can field a few questions.
I don't have anything to say.
How about which schools you might be interested in?
So, my retreat school is Carnegie Mellon University in Pittsburgh. I'm applying to Boston University, UMass Amherst, Worcester State, WPI, and I still have till January to decide for a few more.
Yeah, well, that's, the list is already long. Any questions or comments?
I just hope wherever you choose to go, they're paid to have you as a student.
I hope so, too.
Mom hopes so, too.
Deserve it.
And I have to say, you look extremely well rested. I just assumed that you didn't sleep.
I took a nap today.
Any comments or questions?
If you have any questions about college, let me know. I know about most of those ones that you went to. They're all wonderful.
Of course, if you want, if you need any support from us or any questions or anything we can do through Dr. Brunel, through your principal, you could always reach out to us and we're willing to help out in any way. And just know that you make us very proud. And that great point average, I didn't even realize that was possible. It's so high that you could probably share some of it with some of the other students and still get a scholarship.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you to the Auburn school system because when Dana was in fourth grade, she had pneumonia and she missed a lot of school. And you guys were, the whole school systems reached out and supported our family like it was unbelievable. You know, teachers brought, you know, care packages, dinners and everything because we spent so much time in the hospital. When she came back, you guys were great, too. So, I wanted to thank the whole school system.
That's great to hear.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much for that. It's kind of, I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee, but it's kind of why we do what we do, because we love what happens here in Auburn and we love being supportive of our students and our faculty and everyone across the board in the district.
And don't forget to visit your mom once you go away to college.
Dr. Brunel, do you have any closing comments?
Just, you know, Dana, I think, you know, students of your caliber and important to note, there were lots of kids who really do exceptionally well. But to be able to recognize you for your hard work really is one of the most gratifying things we do. So, congratulations on that and lots more to come the rest of this school year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good luck the rest of the way.
One more question. Do you have any siblings?
Yes, I have a twin brother and so he's a senior as well. And I have a sister who's a sophomore.
So, we're expecting more great things from your family, right?
You've set the bar rather high for the poor kids.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming here tonight. Thanks, Mom. Have a nice night. You can leave at any point in time. I'm sure she wants to go home and study. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Good evening.
And we do have at least one other special recognition.
There is one that I just actually learned about today and wanted to share with you because it just speaks to the character of our students. So, Mr. Desto shared with me that the middle school field hockey team recently played, just yesterday, Oxford Middle. And in their last game, so Oxford only had nine players on the team, and the last time they played them seven v. seven, because of their smaller numbers, Auburn beat them eight to zero. So, yesterday, they had a group of the girls from Auburn who stepped up and said that they would play for Oxford. So, one of these Auburn students actually scored the goal for Oxford. So, they ended up tying one to one. But as the coach said, it must have been their only goal and their only non-loss for the entire season because the Oxford girls, it was as if they had won the World Series. They were so thrilled that they had actually tied Auburn. So, as the coach said, it was just such a happy feeling that everybody had there because the girls really did the right thing. Everybody walked away happy. And Mr. Desto said, you know, they could have maybe scored two to one for Auburn, but we were happy that the girls stepped up and did that. So, I thought they deserved some kudos. Yeah, wow.
Absolutely. That's great.
That's awesome.
I've said it a bunch of times that it's more about the sportsmanship for me. It's great that we have the best coaches and we have the best athletes, but it's the sportsmanship. Whenever we win those awards or we hear these stories or I hear something throughout the district or outside of town, I might hear it out in Charlton. And it's just great, the way our kids carry themselves. Any comments?
That's just amazing that they would do that.
Thank you for that, Dr. Brunel. And do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Young lady, do you have any comments? No? Sorry to scare you. We'll now move on to the Student Representatives Report. Ryan and Ally.
With NEOSK and everything next week, yesterday, we just had an all-school assembly to kind of get the students in the mindset of what to expect for next week with when they're coming in. And some people were volunteered, student volunteers, which I'm sure they'll probably cover for you today as well. But they'll be shadowing, I guess, NEOSK members will join them in classes or they'll have workshops in the day where they'll hold groups. So, that was what we were told yesterday in the assembly with juniors and seniors. As for yesterday, last night, there was a band try M ceremony, which try M, if you don't know what it is, it's the National Honor Society for Band. So, a lot of the kids played pieces and were entered into the program, which was pretty cool. I actually, Mr. Handfield, I had talked to him about the lockdown procedures that I brought up previously. And hopefully, pretty soon, we'll get a step on that with NEOSK stuff out of the way after next week. So, get things set on that and I'll have an update when I talk to Mr. Handfield more. As for senior nights, those are coming up as well. So, recognizing seniors and all of that fun stuff. And on Monday, there is a Humanities Scholars Field Trip to Holy Cross. So, a bunch of students, including myself, will go and talk to other schools about, I think, a video and different topics.
Excellent. Thank you for that report.
And so, just adding off what Ally said with NEOSK, on the student side as well as the shadowing, on Sunday, we have an entire club invite, like all the clubs, and I believe athletics also are going to be setting up booths and cafeteria from 3:30 to 4:00, I think, somewhere around there. And it's really just to kick off and show NEOSK what we really are about. And upcoming events, all of you, and we have our St. John's Conference this upcoming Saturday. And last week was Unified Basketball's first game. I sadly couldn't make it, but from what I've heard, they played very well and everyone was really supportive of them.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for our student representatives?
Sounds like things are going great, as usual.
Make sure you tell NEOSK that. Don't tell them about our shortcomings. Only the good things. I'm just kidding. You can tell them.
We don't have any shortcomings.
We really do appreciate the fact that you both are consistently here. And I personally love hearing the updates because most of us have younger children. So, we like to see what's going on with the older grades. So, sounds like a good time.
No, that was a great report. Thank you for what you do and you're more than welcome to leave. I know you've both got important matters to tend to.
Thank you.
I've got those two testing and a has tomorrow.
Really the same ones?
Yep.
Get to it. Have a nice night. Thank you. I would now seek approval of the minutes of October 3rd.
Take the motion to approve the October 3rd minutes.
The second?
All second then.
All in favor? All right, it is a vote. We now move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to share with you, as you know, NEOSK visit starts on Sunday, the 21st through the 24th. So, here this evening, we have Mr. Handfield, we have Mr. Kennard, and Mrs. LaBeau with a special guest Reagan, who are going to be giving us an update regarding NEOSK. So, I will turn it over to all of you.
Turn this on. Oh, this isn't on, right?
No.
I want to shut it off if it is.
Do you need it on?
Yeah.
Casey, did you click on it?
Oh, maybe that's all right.
There it goes.
I'm used to the technology at the high school. So, good evening, everyone. I only have a few opening comments. Then I'm going to turn it over to my distinguished colleagues. I apologize that I missed you in September. I had a calendar snafu when we were introducing new staff. So, good evening. And as our student representatives indicated, we are off to a good start and we're very, very busy. Tonight's order of business is... So, tonight's order of business, as you've heard, is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges is coming to Auburn on Sunday and they'll be with us through Wednesday. And this is their decennial visit to us. So, they come every 10 years. And they evaluate us on seven or eight standards. And you'll hear more about that from Spencer and Melissa in just a few minutes. It's a process that really goes beneath, you know, kind of the cursory, you know, kind of test score reports that get most of the airtime. This is really more of a comprehensive and an in-depth examination of who we are as a school, all the different aspects of our school community. And that's that. So, it's an important report, it's an important visit. We've been working on it, as you know, I think, for the last two years. You've been hearing me speak about it. And Spencer and Melissa graciously stepped up to be the co-chairs of this committee. There's no money involved, but there's a boatload of time. And they've also got to experience what it's like to try to marshal 65 teachers in a direction and have everyone still be friends at the end. So, they've done a terrific job and I'm very, very pleased to turn this over to them.
Sure. If not, we can do it without.
Yeah, that did look promising. Okay. Oh, perfect.
Yeah. It's a little bit of a delay.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So, I'm Spencer Kennard and this is Melissa LaBeau. And we are the co-chairs of the steering committee for our NEOSK visit, which is happening from Sunday to Wednesday coming up. And as Casey just said, it's been a long time since they've been here and obviously, a lot of things have changed. So, our goal is to just kind of quickly walk you guys through the process of what NEOSK is and a few of the things that we've done to prepare for the visit. I think that, you know, we found this to be a very valuable experience and it certainly has been one that I think will, you know, in the end, benefit our school community greatly. So, we're excited to present this to you.
So, I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with NEOSK, but it stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And basically, it's been around for a very long time. And their job is to go around and study different schools and provide accreditation to them at different levels. They range everything from international schools, independent schools, colleges, secondary. And we fall into the category called the CPS, the Committee of Public Schools. And the visiting committee that will come and be with us from Sunday to Wednesday are from that particular section.
And each section of the country has its own version of a NEOSK. Obviously, it's not called New England, but it has different versions of it. But our version also will credit international schools as well. So, that's kind of interesting. I guess those are the gigs that people really want. It's like go down to like, you know, Panama or something like that.
Check out a school.
Right, yeah. It's really interesting. So, a few things that we're going to be talking about and what they're looking for is, you know, is our school a good school? How can we prove that? So, what are some tangible ways we can do that? How do we measure ourselves? So, what are some bars that we've set for not only the faculty but also for our students? And then, how can we actually, you know, document this? And so, you'll see that our self-study is fairly extensive. We'll talk more about that in a second. But these are, you know, basically the basic steps for the visit coming up in the next couple of days.
So, basically, the process is broken down to three major steps. The first being the self-study, which is driven by the faculty. Second being the peer review, which will be taking place on Sunday to Wednesday when the visiting committee is here. And then, there's a follow-up that covers the next 10 years until they show up again. So, it's kind of a never-ending sort of a process as we kind of work and reflect on their findings.
Right, absolutely. So, our self-study portion is done. Which is great. So, what did it include? It included an actual formal written report, which I think totaled about 120-something pages. And it has evidence linked in there as well, which I think Dr. Brunel has a copy of that. It, again, is created by the faculty and there's a voting process that we go through in order to prove the standards, make sure we're all on the same page. Different committees are also broken up into, you know, basically these fact-finding missions to see how we meet these different NEOSK standards. Sorry. And the last thing is that when we're looking at the, you know, the idea of our self-study, it is really like a whole school event. So, there's going to be, you know, places where we had student input, places where we had parent input, faculty input, administration input. So, there's a lot of different moving parts that go into this self-study. So, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty comprehensive.
And the standards that they're looking for, they gave us seven to kind of help guide us in our process, are first being, first section being teaching and learning. So, they're looking at our core values, beliefs, and learning expectations. You know, how we developed them? What is our process, did our process look like to develop them? How are they reflected in everything that we do? Our curriculum, our instruction, and also assessment of student learning. And then, the other area that we're going to find is more like called support standards. So, this involves our school culture. You know, what does our school culture look like? And how is it run with our leadership? The different school resources we have for learning, you know, the facilities itself, budget, things like that. And then, also, community resources. So, how we're connected with the greater town as well. So, really, every possible aspect you could imagine of the school, they're going to be looking at and we've looked at. And when you mentioned breaking up to write the report, we actually split up the entire faculty into seven committees and worked in groups on these standards. So, each section of the self-study was written by one of these committees and then put together in the end.
And so, no problem.
Get ahead of myself.
So, when we're breaking up the committees, we're really grateful for the committee chairs as well. So, there are seven of those that were in charge of each one of the seven standards that Melissa was just talking about. So, again, super thankful for their hard work. And they were great with communicating, not only with us but also with the administration and keeping everybody in the loop. We'll see that, again, going back to those basic questions like, did we meet the standard? And we felt that we were acceptable in all standards, which is fantastic. So, that was, you know, a real plus that came out of the committee reports. Again, trying to identify strengths and needs in each area as well and each standard. And there are a few of those that are in the self-study report. And again, this took just about, over about two years. We started this really, you know, hitting the ground running in 2016 and just finished up in September. So, it's been a long journey. But we're, you know, very proud of the product that we were able to create with the help of all the committees.
So, what we found is that this whole process has been, as Spencer mentioned, beneficial to our school in a lot of ways. It's kind of led us to look and see that there are some things that we've been able to do over the last 10 years that have been really wonderful. And there's some other areas where we're seeing that maybe we want to grow or maybe, you know, adapt or change on a few things. So, it's been a great reflective process. We found that one of the biggest things that came out of it was we actually created and have adopted a set of core values, belief, and 21st century learning expectations. These actually replaced our former mission statement. It seems like that's the way things are going to more of this core values piece. And also, replace our old school-wide rubrics. The core values creation was a process. We started, I think, 2015, 2016, right before we started writing. And we actually had reached out to faculty, students, and their families, the giant survey, and basically said, you know, what are the things that you feel Auburn High School values? And overwhelmingly, we got a good amount of responses.
Yeah, great.
And we put them together and looked at the top three responses, which came up as community academics and respect.
Which has the great acronym of CAR.
Easy to remember.
And so, we've really, you know, latched on to this acronym and it's been put on, printed on the back of the student IDs. We have a beautiful new banner, which we have a picture of in a moment. If you guys haven't seen it, it's fantastic. And so, it has community academics and respect. It's been on the marquee, on the website, on the Twitter handle. So, really, posters in teachers' rooms. So, most, I think, most students, if you were to ask them what CAR is, they'd be able to give you the acronym, which is fantastic.
And it was nice, too, that when we introduced it to the faculty and the students, everyone was like, oh, well, of course, like, that makes sense. There was no surprise. It's like, it's like, well, yeah, we do those things.
Yeah, right.
So, it was really nice to see that it was a really, I think, realistic, really practical sort of process that we used.
Yeah, I would say it's like, they definitely like, it was, these three popped out by a lot. It wasn't, you know, they really stood out, which I think was great. Okay, so, the other 21st century learning expectations, we have a few ways that we are assessing students, not just with traditional academic assessments, but we also have our social expectation. So, collaborate effectively as a member of a team. And then, their civic learning expectation, responsibly participate in a local, as a local and global digital citizen. And so, these are integrated in what was Midas and now they're integrated in now what is, sorry, what is Power School. I almost reverted back to Scholars. So, they have a way to, we have a way to formulate or report these onto their report cards, okay?
We've created a set of rubrics that teachers use to help guide these students so they know what this expectations are. Where the goal being that every student will hopefully meet expectations by the time they graduate. So, it's just been implemented really the last year or so and we're starting to work on collecting that data now that we've shifted to Power School and have that ability. So, we're looking forward to seeing how that looks at the end of the year.
And then, each department has an academic 21st century learning expectation as well. And so, we'll present those really quick. And we, again, we found these to be, and we really put a lot of emphasis on that we want these to be practical, things that people would use, and ones that would be beneficial for measuring student, you know, success in the classroom. And we think so far that they've had been, you know, we've had a few minor tweaks when we first rolled them out, but for the most part, what was made has worked, I think, pretty well. And so, again, the skills by department, you can see the English has adopted writing, fine arts, depending on the class, creative expression or music performance. Foreign language, oral presentation. Math, problem solving. Science, laboratory investigation. Self-study, which is ours, so we like that one a lot, is research. Technology, creative expression or problem solving, again, depending on the class. And then, wellness is active participation. So, it's, we found that, again, these have been used and they're easily, you know, adapted into the subjects that are being taught. There certainly can be some crossover, but these are the ones that are actually formally reported on.
Yeah, we found to have chosen these because we felt that they reflect our 21st century learning expectations and skills. Previously, we were focusing on more than our basics, you know, reading, writing, and so forth. And we feel that nowadays, there's so much more that we want our students to have when they leave Auburn High and go off into, you know, the real world. So, we feel this is really reflective of those skills.
Our beautiful new banner and poster that is in everyone's room. It's 17 by 11. So, and it has basically what we just showed you guys, the academic, the social, and the civic expectations on it as well.
So, that's all stuff we have been working on for the last two years. What's coming up this week is we will have faculty members coming from schools throughout New England. We'll serve on what's called a visiting team and they will come on Wednesday. We will greet them warmly and host them for the next several days. And before they come here, they will have read our self-study or at least the portion of the self-study that reflects the standard they are looking at. They will be here, I said, three and a half days. They're going to see our school in action. They have a very, very jam-packed schedule. We're not jealous of their schedule in any way, shape, or form. They're non-stop with meetings, interviews, student shadows, and the like. So, they're going to be really busy. But we're excited to let them see really what we do, you know, and the things, and now the school day that we really do.
Absolutely. And I think you have a copy of those schedules in your packets, too.
We do.
Yeah, so you guys can just get a, have a gist of what they're doing. These are regular people and we try to emphasize that not only to the students but also to the staff, teachers, guidance counselors, superintendents. And so, they do it for a variety of reasons. Again, it's all volunteer. So, we really try to, you know, really thank them for their time, for coming here, you know, spending three and a half days, not only out of the classroom or out of their district but away from their families because they do stay in a hotel for those days as well. And they're pretty much like sequestered, like a jury. Like, they're, you know, they go into a workroom in a hotel and it's like, you know, the doors are shut, okay?
They're writing till 10:11. It's a long time. They're running till ten, eleven, it's a long time.
Yeah, like, yeah, it's a long night. Yeah, it's a really long night. So, so again, the, the idea here is that, you know, they come in and they're going to, you know, decide, you know, how we're doing our, our, meeting our expectations that we reported on in the self-study. They will also formulate a report, and that report will be, again, the same standards, those same seven standards that we talked about. And it will, you know, they'll make their own judgment on if we were, you know, acceptable in those ratings as well. And then the follow-up visit?
Yep, so when they leave on Wednesday, usually the chair of the visit will share a couple highlights with us, a couple things that we're doing well, which is always nice to hear. And then after they've had a chance to go back and debrief and start working on the report, we eventually, this spring or so, we expect to get a final copy of the formal written report with their ratings. And that will lead us to figure out where we go for the next 10 years or so. We'll create, you know, usually reports for a two-year check-in, a five-year check-in, and kind of organize and strategize how we want to tackle these things. So it is, like I said, a constant process, but one that we're looking forward to kind of getting towards the end of this, this one.
And again, so we're hosting 16 people. The committee is still a little bit in flux, even though they're coming on Sunday, on who's coming. And again, that's made by NEAS, that's not made by us.
Right now, there's fifteen, maybe fourteen, maybe sixteen, it seems to change every day.
And so, and they range from, we've seen everywhere, from like Newport, Rhode Island, to some people in New Hampshire, to schools closer to Boston, to schools out in western Massachusetts. So, so there's quite a, a variety, I think, of people. And also, again, they really try to vary the, the disciplines as well. So we've seen some guidance counselors, some tech ed, foreign language, administration, principals, et cetera. So again, it, it should be a great, a great group. We're really looking forward to having them. And again, when we're looking at the, when we're looking at the, again, the, the collection here, like, they're doing it because they might also be going on a NEAS visit. They're doing it because they, some people like genuinely just love going to schools and, you know, basically going through the NEAS process there. I think when I did my visit, one of the people on the committee, this was almost their eighth visit, there's just something that they like to do every year. And it's like, great, that's super. And, but again, mo, I would say most, the majority of the people that are coming also have a NEAS visit coming up as well. And we've had probably maybe 12 teachers go out. Yeah, 12-ish teachers from our high school. Most of the committee chairs, Melissa and myself, have all done visits within the last, you know, three years, so. Again, there will be a welcome presentation that starts at Sunday at one o'clock. And then after that, there'll be some teacher interviews, some interviews with parents, and some other meetings that will be taking place. The shadowing and the student interviews that Ryan and Ally were talking about will happen on Monday as well as on Tuesday. They have requested to meet members of the school committee on the guidance conference room, if possible for, for you all to make it, from two-ten to three on Sunday as well. So if that's, if that's something that works, we would, you know, be grateful to have your, your attendance there. And again, it, it should be like, a lot of effort has gone into this and it, you know, we're not, we're certainly not nervous for it because we feel like we've done a good job of, you know, as a school, putting our best foot forward on it. And I think that, you know, had we not done that, we'd be really stressed out. But I feel like, yeah, like, yeah, like, yeah, I feel like we're, we're in good shape, so, yeah. And I think that was our last call. So, yeah, so we're happy to take questions or...
Excellent. Any comments or questions?
I'm just extremely impressed. You guys seem, you do seem very comfortable with the material, with exactly what we're going to go through. And obviously, as Casey said, you know, you guys are busy all the time anyway over at Auburn High School, so it seems like the goals and some of the themes that you set, it, right, it does really sound like what we turn here talking about it, you know, at every meeting. I look forward to actually coming on Sunday as well as maybe coming to the, to the end session on Wednesday, just to get a day there.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well done.
Thank you.
I had always heard about this. Last time they did it, I was still teaching. And I couldn't believe the thoroughness of the schedule. I'm like, they do that, and then they do this, and it went on for more pages and more pages? And I'm like, I, I just never realized that was that, that much involved. They're extremely thorough.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think the first, when I went on my visit, the first time I realized how thorough it was when, when the, basically the, the facilities, you know, our version of Joe Fahey was like, all right, we're going to see the boiler room now, and we're like, all right, I guess we're going to see the boiler room, like, you know...
Always wonder.
Yeah, right, exactly. So it's like, I mean, it is like, you know, I know how much, you know, water is flushed down, you know, in the school, so, yeah, so it's awesome, so.
And I think it really speaks to the teachers at the school, that so many of them have been out on other visits to essentially support other schools as well as prepare.
That was really impressive.
That's impressive.
Yeah, and definitely, being on a visit certainly helps and, you know, and again, we, we go back to, we love our school and we love our school community, and so we just want to make sure that, you know, we do a good job for, for the school and for the community.
Great. Well, thank you to the two of you for sort of spearheading this, and then thanks to the committee chairs, the seven of them. You don't know their names off, I mean, you don't recall who, who those chairs were?
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
Yeah, could you just tell us who they are so that they could be publicly recognized before, at the start of it?
Yep, so if we had, for core values, we had Vincent Bonaccio. For instruction, we had Nicole Le Provost. For assessment, it was Andrew Martin. For curriculum is Karen Ballway. For school culture and leadership is Karen Fedella. For school resources was David Cutler. And for community resources is Eric Berg. That's seven?
Yep, that's it.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we were really fortunate, we had a fantastic group to work with, and they went above and beyond when they could and helped us anytime we needed anything. So we were really, really fortunate.
Based on name recognition, yeah, it seems like you've got a, a core group there, the, the team players.
And just, and also just to, just to Annette Lemmeris and Andy Nezwicki, who were also on the steering committee with Melissa and I. So that was a four-person committee, so they were very helpful for us as well, so.
Well, thanks, thanks to you and thanks to them and the entire faculty, but more so the team for, for putting things together and putting up with everything. I know it's not easy, having been on visits before, I understand what it's all about, but we've, we've got one coming up at my school as well, so we're just in early preparations for that. It's just a lot of work. And I always look to the people who are spearheading it and, and say, wow, thanks for stepping up, I haven't done that much yet. I haven't had my turn at that, and hopefully it's not any time in the near future, but all the organization that goes into it, it's, we, we really appreciate it. And you guys are into it, and it's obvious that you take pride in our schools and our community, and we thank you for that. And please pass that along to everyone who's involved.
Thank you, we will.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that was a great presentation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Renell?
Great. Just want to congratulate Spencer and Melissa for your hard work. I know that there are others here, but I have no doubt that the visit will go exceptionally well. And it's really nice to hear words that I already know to be true, how much everyone loves and values the school district and their schools, so that will shine through. Looking forward to it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And what I had shared with Dr. Renell earlier, just to, just to put the icing on the cake, is I said, this is going to go so smoothly, and not just because of who's in charge here and in case you're certainly overseeing things, but just because we have a great district, and it's because of people like yourselves who really care about what happens here. It's going to go smoothly in the end, we're going to, it's going to be an A++. I'm sure they'll, they'll have very little negatives to say, and a lot of that is based on the preparation that went into it, so.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Any other comments?
Thank you.
No, thanks so much for the presentation.
Yes, my pleasure. Can you maybe turn that off? Oh, let's pull the plug. There we go.
Okay. Continuing on?
Sure, so I just wanted to make you aware, Andre Ravinow had served, he recently retired as the Pittsburgh Public Schools Superintendent, and he was a member of the Mass Association of School Committees Executive Committee. So I was asked to fill his vacant seat. I will, I've accepted to do that. It's actually looking at some statewide issues impacting Massachusetts superintendent, so I will give you a prize, but just wanted you to know that I have joined that committee as well.
Well, thank you for that. I'm sure you've got plenty of time.
You do.
On the committee. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So I wanted to share with you the CPR AED update. As you know, we started a team last year, our goal being to put AEDs at all of the town and municipal fields. So, right now, we actually had put one out at Auburn High School, one at Pappus and one at Upper Lemansky, and those have been up for several months with no issues whatsoever. So we also, one of our members, Jeff Labonte, secured an AED from the Jason Thibodeau Helping Hearts Foundation.
Great.
And Little League has offered to purchase one as well. Oh, good. So there are about seven or eight that we've identified that we still need. We have a small subcommittee, Jeff Labonte, Darcy Cook, Erin Malpass, Kathy and myself, who will work on the fundraising piece of it to get them secured. But we actually also decided that we're going to go as a first-tier model with a hands-only CPR training, and our goal is going to be to try and get the entire community involved in this, as well as AED trainings. So we're going to tap some of our high school students. Hopefully, you know that every student graduates Auburn High School with a full American Heart Association CPR AED certificate. They take it either their junior year or senior year. So what the American Heart Association is really promoting, the hands-only, so we're going to be tapping some of our juniors and seniors to help assist with that, and we're going to be bringing it to the people. So for instance, on Saturday mornings, when Swanton Road is gym-packed with people playing basketball and people dropping them off, we're going to actually have stations set up there. So there's a bit of a competition that Auburn, that the American Heart Association is running, so it is our full intention to win the competition amongst communities and things. So I'll keep you apprised, but that was a, a positive result of the most recent meeting, so I'll keep you updated on that. Just as a reminder, we have the Fall Special Town Meeting a week from yesterday, October 23rd, and then we will be down at the Superintendent School Committee Conference at the Cape from the 7th to the 10th. So we don't resume coming back for our school committee meetings, which will be budget hearings until that second week in November. I'm not sure if those dates listed are accurate. I had it in my head in the third...
I almost thought they weren't.
Yeah, I think they may not be. It lists as the 12th and...
Oh, sorry, the 13th and 14th.
The 13th and 14th, yeah. So it's Wednesday...
Tuesday and Wednesday?
Tuesday and Wednesday, I mean, of that week, exactly.
Yep.
So some busy weeks coming up.
Through the chair, we actually do the hands-only CPR with our nursing students.
Okay.
So successful and well-received, so.
Through the chair, that's great to hear. We did bring them in, and they trained all the sixth, seventh and eighth graders last year. It's a relatively quick training, and what the American Heart, and obviously you know better, really promotes that that can be a lifesaving measure as well, so.
Yeah, people with all the infections out there, there's so much more out to do that. So I think it can save lives.
That's great.
Definitely.
Great. And we now move on to new business.
Just wanted to share with you the list of upcoming events that we have taking place, and also to share that both Mr. Fahey, in his role of a safety advisory team member, and myself, attended the special education parent advisory committee meeting last night and went over with them some of the emergency preparedness things that we have in place. But lots taking place, some Halloween events, high school play coming up, many exciting things.
What play are they doing?
I don't know, actually. I made a note here to find out. I know that there were a couple of different ones in the running. Last year, they did, it's really a, a straight play that they do in the fall, it was Twelve Angry Jurors. So I don't know what the name of this one is, but I will share that with you.
I had heard it and I've since forgotten.
Yeah, me too, I just...
Okay. Are we going to have the teaching and learning report?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Special guest, Dr. Renell delivering the teaching and learning report.
Thank you. So I'm sorry to share that Dr. Lizé is, is home with pneumonia, so she's been out for a bit. So it's my pleasure to step in on her behalf. So just a few quick updates. The youth opioid prevention team, we actually had a meeting just this Monday to review our status of where we are. This grant officially ends in the spring of 2019. We are in great shape with this. We have strengthening families program and training that's going to be taking place, which provides a series of workshops for students and families at the middle school, really focusing around substance abuse and other such issues, and trying to equip families with as much information as they hopefully need to keep their children from getting involved in, in trying those. So that, that work is underway, we're in the purpose, in the process of purchasing the materials and then training. In terms of the best practices grant update, that's the one that we received that brings together our preschool providers throughout the town of Auburn. And we had a meeting just last week, we'll get together again on October 30th. And although we are nearly out of funds on that, those of us in attendance really agree that there's much benefit to us, ultimately trickling down to our students, that if all of the preschool providers in Auburn are talking and sharing, providing shared experiences, it's better for our kids when they come in.
Sure.
We're looking to do some additional training for staff and to also bring some cultural programs to our students, so more to come on that. And then finally, the secret lives of teens and tweens. This actually was presented last week on the...
11th?
The 11th. And it was very well received. We had well over 100 parents who were in attendance. John Matalman was the presenter, and he brought, he infused his talk with humor, and I, I think some, I think the reviews that we got from people, that it was, the time went by extremely quickly, and he gave them some good pointers of things to really do. Wanted them to remind them that this is not, there's no roadmap on how to do this perfectly. It's, you know, you just do your best and keep trying, so I don't know if you wanted to share anything.
I, yeah, I thought it was excellent. Again, as I, as I said to Dr. Renell a few days ago, for a no-frills presentation, there were no, no lights or fireworks or anything like that. It was a pretty simple presentation, but just really well-delivered. And I think the, the highlight was probably his personal experiences with his own children. And I'm hoping that some of them were fabricated because he certainly, he certainly had a tough go of it.
You got something to look forward to, George?
No, if, if I have to deal with half of what he did, you know, I, I'm in trouble. But it was, there was really some, some great information, and I took a lot, lot from it, and I'm sure a lot of other parents did. And, and based on the turnout, other parents were looking for some answers, you know, just one of those times where, where there's a lot of confusion going on, on both ends, both the children and the parents. So it was great. I would definitely, highly recommend that. And the guy, as you said, had a great sense of humor, but more so the, the family stories, which, which he stopped, he stopped allowing people to video his presentations because it was getting back to his children who are now grown. And they were like, all right, Dad, stop talking about us, but just really a, a great presentation.
And through the chair, this is, this is first in a series of what we're calling the Start the Conversation, so to really equip parents with this. So we've got a team that's working on that, so more to come on that as well.
Hopefully, that'll take some of the pressure off of our faculty, if we can start handling some of the matters at home.
Gee, what a novel idea.
Yeah, I may have them come to my school. And we now move on to business and financial.
So for Mrs. Worsbicky, I bring for you a series of transfers, some of that are within the series, but those that are between them, I would ask your approval.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
I think we are.
And we now move on to policies.
So as we've continued to do, we, we look through MASCE, we review them to be sure that they meet what it is that we do here in the Auburn Public Schools. But as you'll see, that they had only very minor updates, one or two. The rest of them were exactly the same as we had them written, but I would recommend that you approve them as noted.
I wouldn't stand that motion.
Make a motion to approve the above-named house as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And do we need an executive session this evening?
We do not.
We do not. Okay, well, that's ten, paying a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Good night, everyone.
Good night.